I call the order, the village board meeting of Monday, September 18th, 2017. We'll start with the silent prayer and meditation. Please join me in a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Snuck in under the wire.
All right. The roll call. Trustee Gaetley.
Here.
Trustee Tau Martinez.
Here.
Oh, trusty. Mark Carroll.
Here.
Mark Cafino.
Here.
Mike Lowry.
Here.
And Laura Lowry.
Here.
All right. I have a proclamation to begin with. I didn't realize our clerk was not going to be here. Proclamation, "In September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month." And whereas September is known as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which helps promote resources and awareness around the issues of suicide prevention, it teaches how to help others and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, or background; and whereas suicide is the third leading cause of death among young people; and whereas North Aurora, Illinois is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, scout leaders, and parents as partners in supporting our community and being available to one another; and whereas local and national organizations like Suicide Prevention Services are on the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public; and whereas the youth of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need to occasionally reminder, an occasional reminder, that we are all fighting our own battles; and whereas I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Dale Berman Village President and the Board of Trustees of North Aurora, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2017 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the Village of North Aurora dated this 18th day of September 2017. Dale Berman, Village President. I did not see if there were any audience comments at this time. Trustee comments? Consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Trustee Gaetley.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Curtis. Lowry.
Yes.
Cafino.
Yes.
On our new business. Item number one. Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Section 5.36 of the North Aurora Code requires that tattoo and body piercing establishments and operators obtain an annual license with the village. As you recall, on August 7th, the committee, the whole, discussed the tattoo amendments that were proposed by staff. And I'll just kind of highlight those really quick, just as a reminder. Tattoo and body piercing operators would no longer be required to obtain a license with the village on an annual basis and instead acquire a one-time license. Tattoo and body piercing operators would no longer be required to provide the village with test results for communicable diseases. Tattoo establishments would no longer be required to have an on-call physician. And I recall the discussion came up, there was some, there was support for this, for deregulation. There was some concern regarding the communicable disease portion and bloodborne pathogens that were discussed. I did look a little further into it, and I did include a list that Dave Hanson prepared for the village. The communities that were on here that do allow tattoo parlor, there is a permitted or special use. Gray's Lake, Illinois was the only one that we found that actually required the communicable disease results testing. And also too, I included some of the Department of Health Body Code art language that requires some certifications for bloodborne pathogen training through OSHA and some of the procedures for communicable diseases and some of the, some of the results for violations of communicable diseases and what can result from that. So if anyone has any further questions, there is an ordinance for approval. And the ordinance is amending chapter, amending Title V, Chapter 5.36 of the North Aurora Municipal Code regarding tattoo and body piercing establishments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I thought we were going to review the feasibility of having at least periodic checks on health. Did you follow through with that or?
Turns out the county is doing this. The county is doing it.
County does that?
Yeah.
I don't believe it's, well, it's part of the, Illinois, well, we have a couple of different overseeing bodies here. We have the Department of Health, which is the IDPH. We have the Registration Act, which is the Tattoo and Body Piercing Establishment Act. We actually have one of our operators in the audience too that might be able to assist us with some of those questions that exist and who are actually the overseeing regulating bodies are. But as far as the follow-up information, we did look at other communities and did look into the Registration Act and the Body Code Act, particular for bloodborne training and communicable diseases. We didn't find anyone that did the actual random testing or tracking.
Is there any information on the incident of that actually occurring?
Where there's some kind of communicable disease transmitted during the process of tattooing?
I did not do research on the actual, if there, what statistics are, anything that exists out there. Like I said, the Body Art Code has repercussions for that. If you look in the last page of the information that I provided in there, it talks about if the department, which is the health department, suspects communicable diseases, what are the procedures for that, including suspension, revocation of licenses and certificates in order to operate the facility?
Isn't it just like a barber shop? Department of Professional Regulations is the state body that regulates. And each person who does this has to have a license from the state, correct?
I believe so, yeah. We, yeah, I believe so. Mm-hmm. Yeah. We actually have one of our tattoo establishment owners here. So, Mayor, if you want to go ahead and?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ramaril Gyan. I run Artistic Theories Tattoo and Gallery on the far west side of North Aurora. There has not been any type of disease transfer from an operator to a client. We try to ensure that everything, every process, every client is protected, as well as we want to protect ourselves and also protect the next client that we have. That was the, from the first question. The second question is, is it's kind of like barber shops, only we actually are doing like mini surgeries. So we have to take it a bit, you know, further to actually protect every single one of our clients and ourselves.
But aren't you, you have to have a license from the state?
We do have to have an approval from the state. We have to submit forms and let them know a certain, they also do random inspections to make sure that everything we do is followed through what their process is and then whatever you guys require.
Right. So my point was that there's another, it is governed by the state. They watch over them.
Yes.
And the state requires you to have a minimum amount of insurance, I would imagine?
Yes.
What was that, Mark?
I couldn't hear you.
That the state would require them to have a minimum amount of insurance as part of their registration in case somebody did get hurt?
All right.
It's already regulated. Right. Correct.
Yeah, it's also a certain amount required by the insurance companies because they are at risk too, or they're, they feel there is a risk to insure a tattoo parlor.
You know, sir, I, I'm not concerned about your individual establishment. I'm kind of thinking in a broader kind of perspective that there will be other establishments as the future unfolds.
Absolutely, absolutely. I totally agree, which is why I'm here tonight. I want to make sure that all establishments, whether it's mine or other new establishments or whatnot, are also following the rules because I'm very serious about this industry. And I don't want them to tarnish what I've been working for so hard.
Right, right, right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Trustee Gaetley.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Lowry.
Yes.
Cafino.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two. John?
Evening, Mayor and Village Board. The item for you is the request to purchase the new Freightliner plow and dump truck. This truck was part of the budget of this year. We budgeted $150,000. The price for this truck came in at $155,000. Before I get too much into the price, I'd like to describe a little bit about the vehicle that we're going to be replacing, then talk a little bit more about the new vehicle, our strategy going forward, and then kind of look again at the cost. So the vehicle that we're going to replace is a 2004 International Five Yard Lowboy. The truck was purchased in 2004. Right now, the vehicle has on it approximately 24,572 miles and 3,290 hours. Now, in order to make that conversion from hours to miles, the manufacturer, International, recommends multiplying the hours by 33. So if you, if you add the number of miles actually on the truck at 24,572 plus the hours and convert it to miles, it translates to about 133,142 miles. So that's just another way to kind of describe the wear and tear that's on the vehicle currently. In the past year, in order for this vehicle to pass the IDOT safety test, we had to put in about $4,740 to pass the safety lane and get it safely on the road for this year. In addition to that, shortly after that, we replaced the kingpin for a cost of about $1,400. And this year, we're looking at replacing the turbo and the oil pan on it, and that's going to cost another $4,900. So all in all, right now, in the last two years, we've put in about $10,000 of maintenance onto this vehicle. And the salvage value, I wrote in the memo, it's $14,000. I think it's probably more closer to about $20,000. But no matter how you slice it, you're putting about $10,000 worth of maintenance over the last two years into a vehicle that's worth about $20,000. So moving forward, we would suggest that we replace this vehicle, put it to auction. We are going to hang on to it throughout this winter because if we get a new vehicle, we won't be able to replace it because it won't be delivered until approximately four to six months. The new vehicle that we're looking to purchase, well, let me explain just a little bit more about the existing vehicle. This vehicle is a low-profile vehicle. And the reason we had purchased these vehicles in the past was because this vehicle was able to service the roads that weren't built to the current standards. So roads that were thinner and would get beat up more quickly, we'd have lighter trucks driving across them. And this was one of those trucks that serviced those roads. We no longer have any roads that have weight restrictions on them. So the need for that truck isn't really necessary anymore. In addition, the plow on this vehicle is one foot less than the traditional plows that we have on the rest of the fleet. So the parts aren't really interchangeable from the vehicle we plan on replacing with the new vehicles in our fleet. The international, or the truck, the Freightliner that we're looking to purchase itself, this vehicle is a twin to the one we had purchased last. We currently have a 2016 Freightliner in our fleet. It hasn't had any maintenance issues to this point. Granted, it's only a year, but the operators say that it runs well. And they like it because they feel they're safer in this vehicle because it raises the level of the vantage point than you, that you would have as opposed to the International. So you're riding a little bit higher. You can see the roadway a little bit clearer. This vehicle, it's going to cost about 150, well, you know, let me talk about the strategy. Going forward, taking a look at our fleet in total, we're trying to look at what we might have as a strategy moving forward for all the vehicles. In this instance, it makes sense to salvage this vehicle and replace it because there aren't a, there aren't a lot of salvageable parts on it, and it's had so many maintenance repairs to it. Going forward, what we'd like, I'd like to ask the board to consider is potentially retaining the next vehicle we replace because it will have the same type of parts and it'll be a vehicle that we can use in case another in the fleet breaks down. So if we have all the trucks out on the road right now and one breaks down, we either have to rely on the contractor to pick up that snow route and plow it, or we have to find a way to repair that truck immediately. In the future, what I'd like to have is flexibility to have an extra vehicle, albeit an older one, that we maintain that would have limited service. That way, in case of snow plowing and a vehicle breaks down, we'd have one that we could put right into the fleet and maintain the same level of service. So the cost of the vehicle today that we're looking at, we had $150,000 budgeted for this vehicle. I'm requesting that we add $5,106 more to that total. We had investigated the, going, we have gone through the state bid price process, which is a competitive process for this vehicle. So we didn't just go to one vendor. We went through the state process, and what they do is they solicit bids to all the different dealers throughout the state. And through that process then, that the state receives bids from each dealer, and they select the lowest bid out of all of those prices that were submitted. So that means every municipality in the state has access to that same lowest bid price, and that's the price that we had selected. At this point, using that price, the cost of our vehicle is going to be $155,106. If you have any questions about this request, I'd be happy to take them now.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, you know, I'd like to say I thank you for being proactive with the way that you presented everything. And I like the fact that you're thinking proactively for the future as far as retaining these other vehicles. Because I think we'll see a lot of cost savings as well as, I think it would just, I think it's a great idea, so.
Thank you.
Well, if it makes anybody feel any better, I did happen to stop over at the Public Works and take a look at that vehicle some time ago. And it really makes sense why some of the attachments really are not interchangeable. So even though the vehicle looks good and everything, I mean, I think it has a DT 466 International diesel engine.
I think so.
Which are known to go 500,000 miles plus. But once you start having issues, the cost of repairs, it's high also. So I mean, I don't have any objection whatsoever. And in supporting the purchase, I just would like to see the other vehicles extend their life perhaps in a little longer mileage because they're known to be very reliable. Okay.
Any more discussion?
No, I was just going to say, that's my only comment too, as far as miles. You said it equates 133,000. I mean, for the engine itself, that's just barely broken in. So like Tau, I like to see him go, and I'm sure you do. But, you know, we want to definitely get our money's worth out of him. So anytime we can do that, I'm all for that. So, but, yeah, it seems like you did the research. And when it snows, you need the equipment, so.
All right. Call the roll. Gaetley.
Yes.
Trustee Martinez.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Lowry.
Yes.
And Trustee Cafino.
Yes.
Item number three. John?
This item is in agreement with MDS to provide pavement, a pavement condition evaluation. So what this study does is it takes a look at our road network and evaluates every single street in town. And based on the cracking patterns and the distresses shown in the pavement, it assigns the pavement an index number. So essentially, at the end of this study, what we're going to have is a study that will indicate which is the best street in town and which is the worst street in town. And it's going to give us the opportunity to address those streets in a systematic way where we're investing our money at the right time on the right street in order to get the biggest bang for your buck. So the company that does this, there's three different companies that we checked with to talk about prices. We ended up going with MDS, who's a local company. They've performed the same type of project in the Village of Bartlett as well as some other communities in the area. I'm comfortable with, with their approach to the project. And one of the things that's going to be useful going forward at budget time is this is, the software that comes with this study is going to allow us to give projections of five and 10 years into the future. So we can plan accordingly our budget and our maintenance costs. So it'll get, give us an idea of what to plan for in the future. So this is an engineering study that I'm looking forward to seeing move forward because I think it's going to provide some real, real insight as to how the, how the road network is performing and understand better how we have invested, how we can better invest our funds in the future to maintain that road network.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion.
I just want to say, no, I think that's great. I think it's nice to have that third-party opinion and it may save us money and all kinds of things down the road and conditions and stuff. So I'm looking forward to seeing, seeing the report, how that works out.
Ever since we got Pearson-Hydenger Street done, that's, that was a big plus. So I don't think we had any streets worse than those two. Gravel Road.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Trustee Cafino.
Yes.
Trustee Lowry.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Martinez.
Yes.
And Trustee Gaetley.
Yes.
Item number four. Mr. Martin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Village Board. The police department's security camera system, it's come up for replacement just based on the age of the server. Last year, I attempted to replace the server and found out that it was hard to find a server that worked with our current analog camera system we have. So we could continue using the current system we have, but there's an annual $20,000 maintenance to keep that system running. So I started pursuing switching out the server and the cameras. So we have the exact same system that we're currently running in Village Hall, the Public Works Building, and the two water treatment plants. This will kind of bring everything together so the police department will have the ability to view all of our satellite locations from the police station. It also increases security because we can centralize security through the computer system here at the Village Hall and Police Department, limit viewing and whatnot with that. We budgeted $55,000 for this project, and I solicited a request for proposals. And the lowest company to come in was Griffin Systems at $50,825. And that's replacing the server and all of the cameras and actually increasing the quality of the cameras and the audio that we get as well in the interview rooms.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion.
Did you say, are the cameras at the wells too? Or just at the Public Works and the Police Department?
They're at the treatment plants, not at the actual wells or the pumping stations, I should say, but the west and the east treatment plant.
Okay.
Any discussion?
So is the server obsolete or is it just not compatible?
The, well, yes and yes. So the server is five to six years old at this point. So the operating system is no longer supported by Microsoft. So it's actually creating a security hole in that aspect alone. So the server would have to be replaced regardless of what we did. So in pricing out the server, it actually starts becoming cheaper to replace the server and the cameras to make everything kind of congeal together.
So it's basically like, like a phone, right? You know, 10 years ago, we had flip phones. Now we had iPhones 8 and you name it.
From what I gather, when the system was put in place, when the police department was built, they purchased analog equipment right on the cusp of when digital is becoming the standard for camera systems. So we saved money upfront by buying the analogs right away. But I think in the long run, now we're behind the ball. And so now we have to replace everything with digital technology, which is where everything's going from this point forward.
Anything else? Roll call. Trustee Cafino.
Yes.
Trustee Lowry.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Martinez.
Yes.
And Trustee Gaetley.
Yes.
Next is old business, which I have none. I have nothing to report as the president, but I do recall a memo from Lowry saying that she was on vacation. And so I should have been parred better. Committee reports.
No.
Trustee comments. Village Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of quick things. First, I put in front of the Village Board at the dais today a picture of our current sign on Butterfield, our welcome sign. It's when you're heading westbound on Butterfield. That would be on the bottom of the picture in front of you. The lettering, Village of North Aurora, Crossroads on the Fox, is all in white. The other nine welcome signs we have around town are the top picture, which is, north is still in blue. So just as a quick refresher, when we put the welcome signs up a couple of months ago, Village of and Aurora were in brown. And the brown, when it was put out in the field, depending on shadows and whatnot, it didn't get picked up very well on the gray stone. So we changed it by just simply painting the letters different colors. And we left the blue and north, the accent, or excuse me, the actual primary color of our logo to stand out that we are North Aurora, which was part of the branding initiative. What we found was, we had several people, several staff people, a couple of board members, and some people from the public who've actually said, hey, just, we like the signs, but we actually think the blue, depending on the time of day, doesn't stand out as bright as Aurora. So you see Village of Aurora right away. You don't see the north, which kind of, and, you know, might defeat the purpose of branding to separate ourselves to be known as North Aurora. Therefore, we painted the sign on Butterfield all white, so it's Village of North Aurora in white. At this time, what I'm looking for the board to do is just simply say, if you like the, the way we have the nine signs or the one sign, and if you like the all-white where the north is now painted white, so it all blends in together, it's a really easy fix. And all it costs us is paint and some man-hours for our staff to go out there and paint them.
I like the white myself.
Yeah, I do too.
Is there a way we could add some blue to it? Like maybe on the tagline, Crossroads on the Fox?
We had.
I just, it just kind of looks weird just to have the blue on the water.
So to that exact point, when the signs were originally done, Village of and Aurora were in brown, north, and Crossroads on the Fox were in blue. And when we painted the white on Village of, we found that the blue that was on Crossroads on the Fox was extremely difficult to read. For whatever reason, that real thin lettering, white popped really well when we painted in the field. And when the blue was on all the other signs, no one can read it. And so we actually painted it white for that reason.
It's a shame though, because in designing the logo, we went with a new color scheme. And now it seems like it's self-defeating because we're unable to use it. But, you know, I do think visibility is the main issue.
I suggest we paint Aurora blue.
I was just going to say, what about Village and Aurora? Painting them blue and leaving north white.
I thought the sign was fine. I didn't realize there were so many problems with the blue.
You can't see.
Beautiful.
Believe it or not, we, I would, if I had to just ballpark it, and, you know, on certain issues, you don't hear a lot of residents come on and speak. But I've probably heard from a few myself. But I had board members who told me that they had a few people come to each of them. And then I had a couple of board members who actually said, hey, you know what? I agree with the residents on this one. You know, we should take a look at the coloring. From a staff perspective, it would be nice somewhere to add blue because blue was the branding color that we want to use. But I understand the point. When you look at the sign on Butterfield all white and everything blends together, nothing specifically pops out, and you still do have the logo in blue. So I guess my point is this, if you were going to do something, you'd, you'd still want it to somehow differentiate north. I'm not exactly sure how we would do that if the blue isn't visible or if it's causing the opposite effect. We did look at, believe it or not, we went to Sherwin-Williams in town, and we asked for specific paints to even make the blue more metallic, to have it shine better, to pick up lighting so that maybe it would be brighter. And they didn't have anything that really would make that really would make that work, unfortunately. So, I mean, at this point, I'm definitely open to ideas, so, I mean, please remember, we've only painted one of the signs all white right now, so it's really easy to change it back if we have to.
I think glitter would work well.
What about like a commercial-grade paint? I mean, you know, I've seen shiny blue cars, I've seen, you know, I know what you're talking about. I've seen it, I know it exists. Can we look outside of Sherwin-Williams?
I can, well, specifically, our guys went to Sherwin-Williams asking if they had, because they do, Sherwin-Williams does sell industrial paints as well. So, John, I don't remember if you remember off the top of your head, but we did send our Public Works Superintendent to the store to ask, in their whole catalog, not just residential, but commercial paints, what they had. Specifically, if they had something that had, I'm used to where glitter, but something that actually did have some kind of coating or whatnot to shine.
Reflective powder that they use for the ground when you paint those white lines. I don't know what it is.
Those are glass beads, I think.
You know...
Well, it's the color. It's, everybody sees it differently, but the dark is gonna show up darker when it's darker out. When the white's gonna show up lighter when it's darker out.
Well, the impression I got driving by when I first saw it was, I missed north, except it was like a second catch. So, I'm gonna suggest again, what about keeping an open mind to painting Aurora that blue, that glitter blue, and then what you would, the impact on the, on the eye as you're driving by would be Village of North in white, which would identify us as North Aurora, and then Aurora will be kind of like a second catch. So, that was my thinking on it, and that's what I'll share with everybody.
And how about if we split the difference? Because, you know, I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, you know, the issue is, how do we make the north step up? Step up. Could we do a blue line under north, between the north and the Aurora, to tie into the blue water?
You need an artist brush.
And now, I know now we're adding a design element to it, but I do think it would, you know, visually, I think it would...
I'll tell you, this is what we can do if they, if the Board wants to. This did not take long at all for our, you know, someone to go out in the field and paint this one sign. I mean, these are bigger letters, the north and the Aurora are the biggest letters, so they're the easiest to paint on the signs. We can see if we can come up with a couple of other options where we have a splash of blue somewhere on the sign. We can see what we can come up with.
Honestly, I'd like to see if you could find us a nice shiny blue metallic. I, you know, I mean, I love how the blue looks. We did a lot of, we paid to have somebody come up with us, we agreed on it. It's a shame now to have to go back and erase all the work we've done. I mean, can we just maybe take a little extra time and see what we could do, what we could find?
Yeah, in fact, I can, we have someone tonight who's gonna talk about the community sign, who is a, from a company who builds signs for a living, so I'd be happy to maybe ask Mike if he has some suggestions at the end of the meeting tonight, and ask him for maybe some guidance, because I'm sure they're gonna run into the same thing when they build our sign on 56 and 31. So, I might just ask him, he might know some of those options.
I like the white. I think you need something practical. Now, maybe you could paint the bottom trim piece or the top trim piece blue to get some blue into it if that's needed.
It's gotta be changed to white. North has gotta be changed to white, because otherwise, you can't see it.
Yep.
And not when every, everybody's pointed out to us that you can't see it, so. Blue, yeah, maybe the bottom, instead of the brown that we had there.
Maybe bottom trim piece or the top cap.
Paint it blue. Whatever, but...
But you need to see it, and we need it practical, so it doesn't have to be glamorous.
North has to be changed to white. I like Mike's idea. I think, make Aurora blue, with the shiny metallic paint, if you want to differentiate.
Just Aurora?
Well, I, I mean, you could, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna just throw this out there, there's one thing we didn't say, and we could make north Aurora together, both blue, so that neither one stands out more than the other, and then we're using our blue for north Aurora, which is our town, and that is our branding color.
And then, nobody will see the sign. I'll have to send my kids to be dazzled.
There you go.
I think that's not a bad idea. I love the blue. Everybody's got a plain, old, boring, white sign. I like the pop of color.
You can highlight the sign with blue.
You can read it.
In other words, you can just take an artist brush and go around, and they outline it out in blue, and then the north Aurora would be there in white, but the outer part would be blue.
Okay.
Just outline the Aurora in blue.
So, you're saying just outline the white letters with blue?
Right. That would give you the blue in...
On both north and Aurora?
Yeah.
Maybe you can bring back some options again.
You know what? Honestly, I didn't know where this was gonna go. I wasn't sure if this was gonna be like, oh, yeah, just paint everything white, or...
But if you paint it...
You just never know.
If it's all blue, you're not gonna see the sign, because most people are driving 35 miles an hour.
Correct.
And if you just highlight it, then you get your blue, and then the white would jump at you.
All right, so I'm gonna go back with John, and John and I are gonna, this is gonna be a discussion tomorrow morning, and we'll figure out if we can come up with some different options, and we'll bring him back.
He's got some ideas. What color are we painting the truck?
Mr. Conasanti, did you want to come to the microphone?
Yeah, I have a suggestion, and it's on top, if you want to do it on top of work, you can do it later.
Let's, let...
We can do it, we can do it later. How's that?
Let's do it later.
We'll do it later.
Anything else?
Oh, just one other thing I'm gonna touch on really quick, is we are getting lots of calls from residents on Metronet being in town. Most of the complaints that we've heard so far is, is just basically down to two things. One, who gave them permission to be on my property? And two, are they gonna restore my property once it's done? What we've been trying to do is to stay on top of this. To put this in perspective, when the Board passed the franchise agreement, a non-exclusive agreement to allow Metronet in town back in April, they're already building in several Fox Valley communities, and they are about to start in a few more. So, this is throughout the Fox Valley, you know, region, so I've been reminding residents, it's not like north Aurora's doing something different than everyone else. This is to bring not only competition, but we have pretty much a legal obligation to allow them, once they get a franchise, whether it's from a local municipality, if they don't get it from the local, they can go to the state to get the same franchise authority. The difference is, the local authority actually gives us more control, so we, we kind of prefer that they do get the local authority, which is what they have. That being said, everyone has easements on the property, and what we're finding is, a lot of the residents don't realize that they have public utility easements on their property for this exact reason, that utility companies by state law have the ability to be on your property to do work. So, once we explain that, most residents, they understand it, so then the next thing we say is, listen, we get it. It's gonna be a little bit intrusive, you're gonna have somebody directional boring on your property. Our job then, at that point, is to use that local franchise agreement we have and make sure they adhere to the restoration portion of that agreement, which means that they have to restore the land to its original state.
Steve, I read somewhere where they claim they don't really disrupt the land, all that, the surface of, because it's some kind of a lateral drilling situation.
Correct. So, they're using directional boring, which is different than what some companies might do, where they do surface trenching. Surface trenching is basically taking a shovel, just scraping the top, so to speak, off the top of the surface, lay your line, put the dirt right back on top. By directional boring, they're going, I believe it's 18 to 24 inches deep, they drill a hole, go down, and they put the cable underground, and they slide it underneath the ground, so really, you only have an entrance and an exit point, so to speak, of where the land is actually disrupted. So...
Most of this is in an easement, anyway, right?
Yes, it's in the utility easement. So, we just found out which neighborhoods are gonna be first, and we didn't find out until literally the residents were finding out, because they didn't come to us to actually start those meetings until they were ready to start noticing those residents, that they were gonna be in their neighborhood. So, we only found out recently. There will be something in the next newsletter, I proofed it this morning, so that will go out as well. We know that the first three sections of town of where they want to start, and it's already on our Facebook page, they're starting in the Hartfield Estates section of town, Country Club Estates in that area, they'll be in Chesterfield soon, and then they're gonna be just west of 31, in roughly Highlands, Willow Lakes, Moose Lakes, and Timbrow soon. And that's all I had. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it. Thank you.
Fire district, not here. Attorney's report?
No report.
Village Department's Finance, Mr. Hannah?
No report tonight.
Community Development, Mr. Toc?
No report.
Police Chief?
No report.
Public Works, John?
No report.
We have no executive after this session, we'll have an executive after the committee of the whole. I ask for a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. We are adjourned. Committee of the whole will start shortly.
Thanks for coming.
Start with roll call. Trustee Gaitley?
Here.
Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Carroll?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Lowry?
Here.
Trustee Gaffino?
Here.
And Mayor Berman?
Here.
Audience comments? Trustee comments at this point? Discussion, item number one. Bill?
Thank you. As the Village Board is aware, the Village provides health insurance benefits for its employees. Every year, we go out and get quotes from our current carrier, as well as attempting to get quotes from other carriers to try and get the best bang for your buck for the employees and the Village as well. This process led to us switching carriers last year, from Blue Cross to United Healthcare. The process generally has been resulting in significant fluctuations in our annual renewals. Some years, we're able to save a few percent, other years, we have to deal with a 10, 15, or 30% increase. So, we have been talking with the Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative, also known as IPBC. This is an organization of about 130 different municipal and other local government clients who essentially created a self-insured intergovernmental pool for the purpose of providing health insurance benefits for employees. So, the Village would pay a monthly amount into this pool, and based on how the pools and subpools do during the year, there could be a dividend or a payback to the pool, and that can go into reserve fund to offset future claims experience and increases in cost. So, while we've had an average renewal of about 7.5% per year, IPBC has had an average renewal of about 2.2% over the last five years. So, it works very similar to traditional health insurance, there's typical carriers involved. The employees really wouldn't see any difference on their end. We still have co-pays and deductibles and access to the same networks. And as I'm gonna introduce Sean Hamilton in a minute here, he's gonna explain what the different subpools are at IPBC and what we would actually be becoming a member of by joining that pool. So, IPBC sets its rates on a July 1 basis, and they've given us an 18-month quote at this point in time, which is about 7% more than what we're currently paying, but it also covers the additional six months versus a traditional 12-month quote, so we feel it's a pretty competitive price. And we think long-term, this is probably a good fit for the Village. We'll save money off higher renewals, and just being able to band together and share the claims experience with other municipalities. So, at that point, I'm gonna introduce Sean, if you don't mind coming up and just kind of walking us through a little bit more about IPBC.
Yep, thanks, Bill. Good evening, everybody. Sean Hamilton with AJ Gallagher. I'm gonna reference real briefly a couple of pages that are in your packet for this evening, which I know are also on the screen. The IPBC itself, the cooperative, has been around since the 70s, so this is not something new. The first two pages in your packet, they may be page three and four of the PDF, actually shows you a member listing of everybody that's in the IPBC. Just by way of 30-second background, I actually was a client of the IPBC as a city manager in the North Shore Municipality, and actually went through the process of joining, and then Gallagher asked me to come to this side of the table. So, I'm also elected official where I live, so I understand and appreciate the role you all play. The listing there shows the memberships and the 130 or so members that are in the IPBC currently. By way of history, about five years ago, there was about 60 to 70 municipalities that were in IPBC, but with what's happening, and you hear about with the healthcare industry, what individuals are seeing in the renewals, the, the demand for membership in the IPBC has been growing exponentially. By way of subpooling, which means joining with your neighbors, which is how it works, think of it like a region in the state, the Village would join the knee-high benefits pool. If you look on that second page of membership, it's highlighted there in that middle column. Within that benefit subpool, there's approximately 16,000 lives. So, by way of comparison, currently, when you get your renewals for health insurance, the carriers are looking at your 50-some members that you had to take benefits. Now, when you're going out for your renewal basis, now you're grouped in and looking at the renewal for 16,000. This is an intergovernmental cooperation, it's finance, it's group purchasing. You talked earlier tonight about buying a truck from joint purchasing. That's why we're able to pretty much secure the renewals at 2.2% over our five-year average versus what you've been experiencing with your average of about 7.5. If you turn to the page of bullets about what the IPBC is, again, we are nothing more than a, think of us as a large intergovernmental cooperative. We've been around since the 70s, we're regulated by the state of Illinois. We do have an Executive Director, Dave Cook, who the staff has met, he couldn't be here with us this evening. We are conservatively invested and managed. The IPBC members itself, of which you would theoretically be one of the 130-some members, holds over $100 million in fund balance reserves. Bill had talked about earlier about the fact that every year, when we experience good years as members of the IPBC, you'd be payback a dividend as part of your membership, our average dividend is about 5 to 6%, and that's based upon what you paid in premiums. We also believe in complete transparency. Village staff has had the advantage of seeing access to not only the claims history and information of what you could experience as a member of a subpool, but you'll also be able to see claims history, financial information of every member within the IPBC. So, if the village or village staff want to start benchmarking yourself with your neighbors, with other representatives, if you want to prepare for negotiations, try to benchmark your plan designs, you could do that for full transparency. Again, the predominant public sector vendors is, is who are the partners here in the IPBC, Gallagher being the broker of record, we have been since the 70s, since the pool was started, Anselk Link being our attorney and the rest. We are not, as the next slide says, a one-size-fits-all mechanism. The Village will maintain control of all its plan designs along with village staff. All we do to keep it very simple is, we take your plan design and pull it over to the IPBC, and then you have the advantage of joining with the other 130-some municipalities that are currently members. Couple pages further there, which is on page seven of the power deck, again, in keeping open with our transparency, what you see there is, there's a chart of the renewals for five years for every member of the IPBC. And if you, I know it's, it's small type, and I apologize for that, but if you look to the far right bottom, what you see there is that 2.2% five-year renewal number that was mentioned in the cover memo. So, again, the stability of the renewals is what is, is one of the biggest advantages that the Village is going to see. Now, the fluctuations that were mentioned there in the opener, about some of the fluctuations that you've seen on your renewals, and we've seen those as well, your average five-year renewal has been about 7.5, you could pretty much eliminate that. It's gonna further get the Village out of the risk business of your renewal, which is obviously a good thing. That's kind of some of the highlights. I'm here to answer any questions, I know, I know Bill was as well, but answer anything that I can for you, if you'd like.
So, do you negotiate the renewal rate on behalf of the Village?
We do. So, yeah, so, and it's really on behalf of all the members, right? So, we have two main, we have two carriers in the IPBC, Blue Cross Blue Shield and United Healthcare, and so, the total lives in the IPBC right now is over 40,000. So, when we're going to negotiate with your United Health Care's and Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're negotiating on the behalf of 40,000 lives, et cetera. We spend a lot of time talking about medical, but it's not just medical, it's life insurance, it's dental, it's vision for those municipalities that offer it. So every few years, the IPBC goes through the procurement process, whether it be for whatever carriers, et cetera. So sometimes those carriers change, but in essence, we're negotiating on behalf of everybody. Different municipalities have different rates based upon how many employees you have, what your plan designs are, et cetera. So it's not, you're joining, here's your rates, everybody's kind of different. But we do all the negotiating on behalf, and then this is a board of directors' decision. So the subpool that you'd be joining, the Village has a seat in that subpool that's represented by staff, and it's the actual IPBC members itself that make all the decisions and vote on those things. So when those procurements come back, it's the board itself that's voting on what those decisions are. We recommend, we don't decide.
Just one thing to point out in terms of timing, if this is something the Village seems interested in pursuing, we would, there's a 90-day window to get this in place by January 1st. So a resolution would probably come before the board at the next Village Board meeting, which would sort of formally approve that process if this is something the Village would like us to consider and pursue.
Yep, and so just a little color there if I could, Bill. So the rules there are put on by the carriers, they're not, they're not our rules, they're not the IPBC rules, but the carriers. And it's a 90-day implementation window prior to the renewal. So your renewal is 1-1, so you're at the 11th hour, but you're right in the window. So we already know that even with your meeting schedule, we've already talked to the carriers, if you guys decide to move forward, you're still okay. It's not that you'd have to decide today per se, but I know that from our perspective, we're just looking for some consensus that you're going to consider the resolution and move forward, and the carriers will be aware of that, and then the implementation process could theoretically start.
How does the, how do you guys get paid from the Village? We pay a certain amount each year and then we get that back?
Correct, yeah, so it's, the amount that the Village or any member pays in premium is all-encompassing, and it covers everything from your health insurance premiums, any other ancillary coverage if you select that, right, you know, your vision dental, et cetera, and then what it costs to prepare the audit, what it costs Gallagher, it's all-encompassing. And the IPBC board members itself, of which you would be one of them, you vote and approve every year on what the budget is. And that includes, again, in a very transparent manner, what's the total compensation for A.J. Gallagher, how much is Ansel Glink making, how much is the auditor making, et cetera, very transparent. We are in year three, being Gallagher, of a five-year brokerage agreement that, again, has been procured and negotiated by the members of the IPBC. So, but, but that's how we get paid.
And then this would be for an 18-month period, and then if we decided we didn't want to go back to the fund, we could just negotiate on our own?
Yeah, it's, yeah, theoretically, it's 120-day out is what you'd have to give notice on. I can tell you that just because of the way this is, nobody, nobody ever leaves. The last, there was a group that left back in 2010, had to do with some political reasons, they got rid of a manager, they undid all this stuff, and then four years later, they came right back in. So that, that's why it's been around since the 70s, it's just because of the structure and the financing and getting the Village out of the risk business, nobody ever leaves. But the answer to your question is yes, there's a 120-day out if you want it, but, but your rates are going to be locked for 18 months.
I have a question. How does it advantage the Village? Just, bottom line, is it less money?
Yeah, so, so, you know, if you're doing what they call like an elevator speech, or if I'm, you know, if a resident's asking you, so a couple of things, it's, again, intergovernmental cooperative and purchasing at its finest, right? So like I just said before, when, when we go to a Blue Cross Blue Shield or United Healthcare or Express Scrips for pharmaceuticals, we're going for 40,000 people versus right now, you're going to those markets with your 50-some that take benefits. So it's group purchasing. The other thing is then because of group purchasing and because of group experience, our renewals are much, much tighter, right? So that's where that deviation is, where you all have been experiencing, your history has been about seven and a half, but the five-year average of the IPBC has been about 2.2. And then, because you're an owner-partner, you own this thing. So then you get paid back a dividend every year because it's, it's your money. It's not the IPBC's money, it's your money, and those dividend fluctuates about 5 or 6% a year. So you're out of the risk business, you become an owner-partner, you're no longer a customer of an insurance company, and now you have some ownership in what the results are of yourselves in the subpools and the IPBC. So long run, we see it's nothing more than a financial vehicle that's going to save the Village a good amount of money, which is, with all the uncertainty right now of the healthcare industry, is a good thing, and that's why the demand is so high right now.
I'm good with it.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Item number two, Mr. Bosco.
Do we have to give any direction on that?
Yeah, before we go to item number two, I just wanted to make sure we have direction to take a resolution.
I'm willing to look into it and for it myself, yes, I think.
All right, then we'll bring the resolution to the next Village Board meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is our community sign discussion. So we have a contract with Western Remac to build a community sign at 56 and 31. Per the contract, we went from three designs down to two designs. The, the two designs were picked by a kind of a conglomeration. We went to have it at a public facilities meeting, but we didn't have a quorum, so I managed to bring it to a development team meeting, or a group meeting, excuse, committee meeting as well. So I got a couple trustees at both committees, combined them, talked to the mayor, so I got about four people's opinion on the board, and I was able to get some consensus that everyone liked concept A in front of you tonight, which Mike, if you can do that then...
Steve, I'm not getting any signal, and neither is Mark here.
I just, let me give you a minute to...
Yeah, it'll take a second, because when Bill shuts off, there's a little delay.
But I didn't get one before at all either.
Oh, you didn't?
Oh, here it is. Oh, no, finally the old one.
Is it on the packet?
Can we do the blue letters?
In the meantime, it's in the, it's in the packet, so. So what happens is we, per the contract, we had to reduce it down from three designs to two. So we have two designs in front of you. The contract is not to exceed $70,000. As of right now, one of the concepts is slightly higher, but don't worry about that number, because we're going to get it down to 70,000 no matter what, we'll make sure that it stays on contract for that. So what we're going to do, I mean, they're both within 169,000, 172,000, they're both right there. So what I want to know tonight is basically which concept do you like? And, and if you don't like either one, I'd like to know now, because before we move any further, I just need to, so that what the next one we do is the next sign that we're actually going to build, and that's the point we're at now. So there are some color renderings, we have one on the screen in front of you. So I have here tonight is Mike Conasini of Western Remac, the sign builder, and then we have Lori from Greenberg Pharaoh, and they are the design company that designed the concepts. Lori, if, or Mike, if you would like, did you want to walk through this at all? Did you have any comments you'd like to make about each sign to explain maybe the materials a little bit?
I like concept A, is what I like. I don't know what everybody else likes, that's what I like.
Again, my name is Mike Conasini, I'm with Western Remac. We are a fabricator and installer of all sorts of community branding signing, done a number of these gateway or welcome entry signs, a number of them incorporating a message center and a number of them without. We teamed up with Greenberg Pharaoh on the front end to do the creative and the design for the product. Lori Vero is with Greenberg, she's here tonight, and she can certainly walk through the thought process of each concept with you guys. And then, like I said, from there, once we decide on a concept, then we'll, we'll be taking the next steps of, you know, finalizing colors and so forth with Steve and his group and going to manufacture and install. So I'll turn it over to Lori.
Good evening. If I could have you go to the next, go a little closer up. So I'm going to flip between this sheet that was just up and this one, this one, at least we can zoom in a little tighter. This first concept for the sign, we really took, actually the signs you were discussing earlier, the current small, smaller-sized entry signs that went in last year, using the materials that were on that sign as well as the new branding that has been adopted. That was our start. So this sign is trying to complement the gray that's on the smaller signs, but in our opinion, looking at the design, because those are smaller signs, the smaller stacked gray stone works well. This sign, as you can see by the, in the elevation, that would be a six-foot male to give you an idea of scale. We went with a larger stone for the gray because the small stacked would get way too busy on such a large sign. But the complementary, the color would be a complementary to the gray that you already have, and then you can see, obviously, the font would be the same, and then trying to pull in the column using your logo as part of the new branding as well. And not to get into it, but we have Village of in blue and we have North Aurora in white. Hopefully that works. But that's the first sign, and as you know, it would be at the northeast corner of 31 and State. If you might go to the, go to the bigger one. And if you have questions, we can go back to the smaller imagery that you'll see also on your screen. So the second concept, we are looking at something a little more non-traditional and using the brown and the idea of the bridge has a little more of an industrial feel. So this is a brown, is using metal, a metal box for the enclosure around the LED sign. And again, pride to painting, either one idea was using a Corten steel color, but, or possibly it could be the brown of your logo, since we know those Pantone colors. But again, a little more, being more non-traditional and industrial with the Village of North Aurora, same thing, your same logo icon would be on that. And then all of this would be set on large limestone outcroppings. So now pulling back into the feeling of river and natural stone, so you have a nice juxtaposition of the metal and then natural stone, and then it's cantilevered over, and again, it would make a nice statement at that corner. And with that, I will just ask if you have questions or if you want to see the other images.
If, if I could really quick, I'm just going to let the board know, on this design specifically, the steel that they originally designed is a, is a very expensive material. So what ends up happening is it ended up being a flat brown color as opposed to a rusted look where it actually looks like the sign is weathered. That was what happens when you start to design it and you start to do value engineering and go backwards on, to meet that budget number. So the sign probably doesn't look maybe at what you thought it might look like, which is that steel sign on the bottom left. So that's what the original intent was of that design. At this time, I do want to also point out, so on the Route 31 corridor, we have a sign code. Now, the current sign is around 15 feet tall, give or take a couple of feet. This, these top out at nine feet, so we would still, we're actually reducing our current sign to a lower number, but would still need to approve a variance to allow it, because technically the sign code only allows six-foot signs. The funny part is these are monument signs, which is what the sign code was designed for, was designed to bring signs down to monument signs. We just, our monument sign is slightly taller than what the current code would allow. So even though it's a reduction, we would need an additional variance from the board before we could approve it. So I wanted to point that out. There is also something that, you know, Mike, maybe you can touch on it too, is both of these signs have, they're not included necessarily in the price, but the second one and the first one differ in how they're lit and how you would suggest them to be lit at night.
Yeah, obviously, two different processes. So the sign you're looking at right now, type A, that would be a dimensional letter mounted to the stone, pin-mounted to the stone. So it would stand off the stone a little bit, and then it's designed to be spotlit. So when you do your landscaping, you would, you would incorporate spotlights into that, uplight it onto that bottom base to light your letters, okay? We would pin-mount it because it would create a nice shadow on the stone as well, it's a nice architectural look. On sign B, the design here, because the letters are within the cabinet itself, what we would do is those would actually be internally lit. So we would actually do a push-through letter and halo-light it. In fact, I think if you go up to the spandout version of this sign with all the, if you look at that Mindray, that is an example of a halo-lit letter. So, and that, that's just purely halo-lit because they're using black text, so it's just strictly around the letters. In your particular case, we would make the, the white and the blue translucent, so the letter itself would light through the face, and then it would also cast a nice halo effect around the letters as well. In addition to the logo itself, that would also be lit the same way. So, and I also should say that, obviously, haven't really talked about it, but in both these scenarios, the message center board is the exact same technology and same board. It's a 15-millimeter pixel pitch, full-color Dektronics board, so.
I like that.
And that'll give you option for basically text, but also nice, you know, images as well, so.
What's the width of that second one there with the flagstone?
The over, the overall width?
Yeah, the, yeah, versus the other one.
If you go, is it?
Yeah, it's on the other.
It's on the other slide.
14 feet.
It's about 14 something, I believe.
Yeah, 14.
Okay.
About 14. What's the other one then?
12 and a half roughly?
That's it? Looks smaller.
It looks like 12.
Oh, 12, okay.
I like the first concept. I think we need to maintain uniformity in our branding. I think, I'm really not a big fan of the second one. I see those all the time by high schools, you know, they kind of have that similar design. I love the first one, especially if we could do some, some creative lighting at night, I think it would, it would look stunning.
I agree.
I agree.
I do too. The only comment I would make is that the Village symbol on the post, I think the brown is going to get washed out, just like the letter, and I like the white from the second one on that, I think shows up better, especially in the smaller picture.
Yeah, and again, the concept with that, that's going to be a dimensional piece. It's made out of a product called Sign Foam. It, it's basically, it's an exterior product that will allow you, it can be painted any color we want, is what it comes down to.
I think just...
Yeah, I just saw something there. I love the, the blue, we have the blue Village of, then North Aurora is white. There you go. Get it all covered.
There you go. I like it too.
All right.
Okay, so at this time, we're just looking for direction. It sounds like so far, people have only commented on an A, so is, is A what the board is comfortable with?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then I will go with Mike and Lori, and we'll, we'll get back and we'll, we'll go to the next step.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, Mr. Bosco.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three is a discussion of the Overlook gazebo rentals, and this one I am going to try to do as concise as possible, because what we thought was a two-minute conversation at the staff level turned into a two-hour conversation. So very quickly, as you know, the Village obtained from the Park District, the Park Riverfront Park right behind Village Hall. As part of that, we've had a long outstanding IGA, an intergovernmental agreement, basically to oversee the maintenance of not only the park now, but we also maintain the Overlook gazebo, which is technically on the Park District's property still. So essentially, it's in a lot of ways our gazebo already. It was a technicality, so if the board wants to rent the gazebo out, we would go back to the Park District and simply ask them to amend our agreement for Riverfront Park to specifically state, even though we think the intention was that the Overlook gazebo was ours, that specifically state that it's actually the property of the Village. But assuming, before I go to the Park District, I want to know what the Village Board thinks as far as opening it up the opportunity for people to rent the Overlook gazebo. So we've had, probably in the last year or so since we've taken the park, I'm going to wager about five calls from residents who are looking to basically have weddings, or the, the most recent one I took was two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and the lady's son grew up in North Aurora, she still lives here, and he wants to be married in the Overlook gazebo. We've had a first-come, first-served policy, basically internal policy, since we took the park. Anyone can use it, it's a public park. The only problem with that is, obviously, if someone goes to the park to, let's say, even take photos for prom or senior pictures or something, if there's someone in the gazebo, they don't really have the right to be there as well. I mean, they have to wait their turn, and who knows how long the other people might be there. So we started looking into it just to see if other towns did, and we found some other towns that do, in fact, rent out aspects of their parks. Of course, the Fox Valley Park District rents out the pavilion just across the street for parties. So what we said was, if we rent it out, we'd like to keep this as simple as possible, an internal application process that myself or a designee can sign off on, so it doesn't have to go to the Village Board, we don't have to wait for it to go to a board meeting. The only issue we have is, is this something we want to do, because there's a few concerns. And those concerns are very nicely, our administrative intern put together an application that would be basically two pages, and what you see in your packet is policy and guidelines, basically addresses all the concerns that came up by looking at other villages and what they do and the concerns that we would have by the river here. So primarily, our big issue is time, you know, how long do you let someone rent it? Right now, we're suggesting it would be, if we do this, it'd be for two hours maximum, that it would be limited to only weddings and only wedding ceremonies and pictures, so that basically you're not renting the gazebo out every weekend in case we're having village functions or people just generally want to use the gazebo on the weekends. We want to make sure it's open to them, we want to make sure that alcohol's contained, that it's not on the gazebo, that it's only in the park when we designate it, that they don't start setting up a reception in the park. So we, it's pretty tight as far as the guidelines. I need to know if the board wants to go the direction of opening it up to, to residents or non-residents, and if so, do you have any additional concerns if we did rent it out? And that's where I'm at tonight.
Well, I, you know, I think it's a great idea. I'd love to see it get, get used, it's a beautiful backdrop for a wedding. But I, you know, the one thing I had an issue with is the fee being refundable, and I think it's set a little low. You know, I wouldn't mind, I'd like us to be able to retain the cost just for cleanup and any maintenance that, you know, obviously, if we're going to have to maintain it, the more it gets used. But maybe if we did a tiered fee structure, like one resident fee and non-resident fee. Because, you know, I mean, like I said, I'd love to see it get used, I could see why people would use it. I think it would be good, good, almost as a marketing tool for us to have people from the region come in and see our beautiful riverfronts and, you know, if we ever get things going with Block 31, so I, I'm fine with it.
I am too, and I agree that maybe we should think about...
I am, too, and I agree that maybe we should think about keeping the fee, I don't know about, I don't know if the deposit is different than the fee or not.
So we originally had a fee, and at the last second, we changed it to a deposit, and, and that's why I'm glad we're having this conversation, and we, and we did reticency only based on some other town around here that did that. So we would have, I agree with you a hundred percent, if we do a resident, non-resident, makes sense to charge differently. The deposit fee was specifically designed to cover the cost for public works if they were, the biggest concern the staff has is staff time, because we only have six full-time street personnel. And if someone was having an event on the weekend, we'd have to have somebody come in essentially to make sure the garbage is empty, make sure the gazebo's cleaned and whatnot. So what we are going to do is, the way it's currently written is, it would be basically the responsibility of the person at the event. So they go, they check it out an hour before, if there's an issue, they call the village then, we would retain that deposit, and our person would clean it if they, if there was no need to clean it, and they cleaned it and everything was fine, and then they left it in good standing order, we just give them a hundred dollars back. But I have absolutely no problem with the charging fee, and we already know what that number is to cover.
I have one more idea that might help the village in terms of ease of use in, in doing this, and that is to maybe require a certain time, let's see, how could I put, amount of time prior to the event. Most weddings are planned months in advance, so I was wondering if we could have like a thirty-day limit. You'd have to register it or reserve it at least thirty days prior to its use or something like that.
That's, that's the exact number in the application, that's exactly what we thought.
Oh, okay.
You know, you're on, you're on page with us, because we do sometimes get people at the last minute.
I was looking for it, I couldn't find it.
I was a little more generous, Trustee Laurie. Originally, I was going to only do fourteen days. But it was actually David, our intern, who said, people plan weddings way in advance, if they can't call us and give us their day's notice to prep it.
Right.
So.
Okay, great.
I, I think it's kind of overkill for five people that have called in the last year, but I, I think that, you're going to rope off the gazebo? Is that how it's going to be done?
No, essentially, what you do is you put a sign up that just says, so the day before, when I put a sign up that says, you know, this gazebo is reserved, so we posted in the ground, this gazebo is reserved from 2:00 PM till 4:00 PM tomorrow.
Well, what if you have two people that are getting married on the same day, and you reserve it for two hours, and people don't know that it's out there? And they, if you're going to take pictures for a wedding, you're going to take pictures for fifteen minutes, but yet you're reserving it for two hours, and we're turning other people away. What's to stop people just from coming? I mean, if they want to take pictures for their wedding, they'll just come down and take pictures by the riverfront for the wedding.
Correct.
Why would they pay a hundred dollars to do it?
That's why we figured it's mostly for the ceremony, and when we say photos, the photos is part of the ceremony. So if you're reserving it, I mean, I can tell you from my wedding, the, I always feel, I've stood up on a bunch of weddings, and I always feel like the pictures take like forty-five minutes, so, and my ceremony was an hour long, so we figured two hours was enough to cover some pictures before the ceremony and some pictures after. So that's why we did the two hours. But I agree with you a hundred percent, if someone wants to randomly come down, if the gazebo's being used, they can always take their picture somewhere else by the river, per se, and if it's not being used, they can just hop in the gazebo on their own.
So why do you need fourteen-day notice or thirty days, or, I don't really understand that part of it.
Part of the notice is just in case we want to have a function or something at the park, something pops up that-
So if they are out there today, we have an event, you just tell them to beat it anyway? I mean, because they can do it any, anyway, right?
I mean, correct, someone can use the gazebo at any time.
Right.
So if we're having North Aurora Days event down there, and someone wants to use the gazebo, that's fine, they're not going to get the guarantee that they would have the gazebo to themselves.
Oh, right, right, no, but as far as the thirty-day, what, I don't know, that's, to me, it's almost too much work for, why we're looking to do extra work, and I leave it alone, and let people come and go as they want, and-
I agree.
It just seems too much cumbersome, you guys got enough to do, let alone deal with this and that maintenance.
There's a conflict, you know where they're going to come.
Well, but it's a public park. I mean, here, if, I, I don't think if somebody's there in their wedding dress and taking pictures on the gazebo, you're not going to have bike riders photobombing them where it's going to be a big problem, where they're not going to get off the gazebo. That, it just, people aren't that rude. And so I think that it, it just, I, I, let it be a public park. I mean, why charge them to come down to the riverfront?
Well, the ceremonies, I, I've been to the last couple, it seems like the kids are having weddings outside now, and there's like, you know, forty or fifty people. Yeah, I don't know, and if you get three of them in one day, or you, you know, I mean, if you're getting four requests, right, is that what you said?
Yeah, we've had four or five in about a year.
And I would think it will take more than two hours to set up-
I think it's just-
-chairs or anything that may be involved. By the time you're done, I mean, the two-hour window.
And that's the concern, is that they would have to bring their own chairs, and once again, they'd have to leave those chairs in the gazebo area. That's why, it's a very, it would be restrictive in the sense that we do not want, and the staff understands that a hundred percent, we don't want it spilling over into Riverfront Park, because the intention of the park when the village took it was to leave that park open for use at all times, except for when we have community functions in the park.
Has that been a problem?
In, in what regard?
Anything spilling over, or, I mean, have we had any issues? I mean, what's driving this whole thing? We just think we should do this?
Just affected, it was brought up by a few people who asked, one lady specifically said, you know, I've been a resident so long, I pay taxes in town, I want to use this, you know, gazebo, why can't I rent it, other places do it? We've had a few people say that, so we said, you know what, might as well throw it to the village board, see if it's something you want to do. I will tell you, from, like I said, our concern is the amount of staff time it takes to orchestrate something for three times a year, four times a year. So we do have the same concern.
Are we going to provide yeast, please?
Well, and I don't think, even if it was a wedding, I don't think anything prevents somebody from coming down here for an hour ceremony with their minister, judge, whoever, getting married, and then just have people stand around, why do they need a permit for that?
Correct, they, they don't, they don't.
They can do that now.
Okay, let, let me just give my opinion on this, because think about if you were getting married, you want to do it at the gazebo, you had no guarantee it would be available, the second weekend in June, you come down, some other people are already there, you've-
But it's going to be like that anyway, because we're only going to rope off the gazebo, so you're going to have the bike riders going up the bike path, you're going to have people in the park.
Well, you know, you know what you're getting into, and, you know, it's clear, all you're getting is the gazebo.
I, I just don't think it makes sense to do it.
Other people could be in the gazebo, so I can see, it could be a conflict, that's all.
No, I, I think it should be scheduled, I'm with Laura on this. We could have all kinds of, what if somebody went down there, like a group of young enthusiastic people, and they were having a party there, when the, and the person comes down with a wedding or something? I think it should be at least able to be reserved, whether there's a fee or not, I, that's not a big deal, but I think it'd be smart to do that, just to cover the cost of expenses of cleanup and so forth. But I agree with Laura that it's, I would rather have it scheduled, myself, you know, would-
I agree.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have it, I mean, if we got people requesting that live here, and they, they were saying, hey, I want to schedule my son's wedding, my daughter's wedding.
Do we get in trouble if we limit it, Kevin, to just one event, type of an event? I mean, if, what if I want to have a Boy Scout meeting there? Can, what's, why can't I reserve the park? Then, why, why do we prefer weddings over anything else?
You can reserve what you want, but that's the, that would-
No, but this specifically has wedding or, or, they said, it's specific to weddings.
We did specifically to weddings, based on some other models that we saw, for the simple fact that we wanted it to not, if it was everything, we didn't want to run into a situation where we're having North Aurora Days, and we want an event down here, or the Lions Club, or the Mothers Club is planning an event, and now we have it open to so many different opportunities.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
They have rented every weekend, and all of a sudden, you're like, okay, we're going to put a community festival here, and there's going to be a group of fifty people right here to the left, trying to have a ceremony.
I just don't want it to be a bigger issue for staff and our six public work people, and, I mean, I'm not totally opposed of reserving it, but it just, you know, if the thing grows legs and creates issues from it.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think the reserving part of it would be a, is a pretty difficult perspective.
But it has been an issue, though, right? Have we had two weddings during the day?
Not that I'm aware of. But once again, because no one comes to us ahead of time to say, can, they'll ask if they can have, and we say it's first-come, first-served, so. I mean, in the grand scheme of life, as far as like complaints and questions we get from the village, we don't get a lot of requests. It's one of those, I will say this, the staff, when we took the park, immediately asked that question internally to myself, and I said at the time, let's, you know, the, I think the intention is to leave it open for the general public, and which is what we did. I said, let's see how many calls we got. So we did get a few phone calls, and, and once again, that's why we're bringing it up, just because it has come up a few times.
Well, I do, would like to know, do we get in trouble legally if we limit it to one type of an event?
I think if we're, we're focusing on weddings and saying that we're just going to schedule weddings, and that we're going to just let everything else happen as it happens, I don't see that as being problematic from a legal standpoint. I think we might get into trouble if we were focusing on other type, other things, like based upon the substance of the speech or something like that. I, I don't, my gut, I mean, I, I haven't researched it, but I don't see an issue with saying that we're going to schedule weddings, and that's all we're going to schedule. There's a potential that we could have an issue if we were selective in, in other ways, though.
The bride has to wear white?
Right.
I just say, keep it simple, you know?
And keep the, keep the hundred dollars.
Well, refundable?
No, why, but why would we make it refundable?
Based on my comments, if we were to go forward, and I think the staff, like I said, we originally thought that the fee, we were doing the deposit because we thought that maybe that would work, but we did have a number that I think would be reasonable to charge, and that would cover our public works, because-
So you are going to have, we are going to have some costs in the game besides staff?
Yeah, so what would happen is-
Cover that, for sure.
And that's the thing, so if it's a Saturday and someone's having a wedding, and we have to call in public works, it's an automatic two hours of compensation for that employee. So what we did was we take a, we take basically a blended number of what our overtime is.
Guaranteed it's going to be all cleaned and ready, and all the spider webs down, and-
That's why we would do it right before the event, so if it was, and that's why there's a cost. I mean, we could easily clean the gazebo on a Friday for a Saturday event, but you can't guarantee it's going to be cleaned by Saturday afternoon.
It's still an extra cost that these guys could be doing something else, you know?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we'd be calling them in and having to pay them overtime for two hours, so if the event was at two, calling them at noon.
Even if it was during Friday, I'd rather have them do something else than clean in a gazebo.
That's true, you're right, during work hours, they would be-
If you charge a fee in, that's the way it is, if they want to use it.
Absolutely correct.
Yep. You guys figure that out, I guess, what that fee would be? I mean, what's the cost of having a guy come in for two hours?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to figure that in there.
Then if there's any additional damage or any, you know, more than the typical type thing, then maybe deposit also.
We did have, that they have to sign a hold harmless that says if they damage it, that we can go back for restitution. I mean, like I said, we're throwing this out as an idea, it does not have to go forward, it can stop here, or it can go forward, and if it did, I just wanted to know how the board felt about going forward, what parameters you thought might be more reasonable or not. And right now, I, I don't necessarily have clear directions, so I'm kind of trying to gauge that.
I think it's good to have it, something for what?
You've got fewer than seven suggestions anyway, so. You've got something to work with. You can have him pull.
So we are going forward, or do you want me to sit down and monitor longer? I mean-
Go forward and figure out a cost.
Okay. All right, at this time, and then what, that's what I'll do, and I'll just, I'll let the board know, and do you want to see the application when it's finished? Come back to you then?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, I'll, I'll do some tweaking, and we'll get the final application, the fee and everything, and we'll put it together for the board to review. Okay, thank you.
Very good. Item number four, Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Title V of the municipal code regulates business licenses and regulations. Parve discussion tonight being tattoo establishments, certain business use types are licensed to the village, tattoo establishments being one of them, massage establishments. The Title V also requires that each business register with the village annually at a fifty dollars, and it's done on a calendar year. Section 504 requires that a business pay fees for miscellaneous business operations. And as I indicated in the staff report, those include things like vending machines, ice machines, gumball machines, restaurant seating, billiard tables, and those are some examples. I actually included the application for business licenses in the packet for tonight, and you can see some of those items in there. As part of streamlining our internal processes and sort of promoting North Aurora as a business for the community, is the idea of maybe doing away with some of our business licenses. As you can see, these, these are smaller items, they're, they're done actually on the honor system, we don't go, actually go out and look for these types of appearances, they're actually required that they come in and license with us annually. In order to cut down the confusion on the registration and the licensing processing, what we look to do would be to remove all the license requirements of chap, just section 504, with the exception of the waste hall removal license fee. We would keep that as part of the section. As I, as I also note in the staff report, we collect annually about ninety-nine hundred dollars in fees from this particular portion of this program. Roughly about twenty-five hundred dollars of that is just for waste hall removal licensing. So if we, if we were to remove that, we total revenue loss for removing the business licenses would be around seventy-four hundred dollars. And just as comparison to, based upon the three hundred businesses that we collect annually, we do receive about fifteen thousand dollars currently from the business registration program. So the whole point, and again, just open for discussion for tonight, is to get some feedback and start that, is just removing the, the portion of 504, which are the vending machines and all the other items listed in the application and the staff report. So if you have any questions or suggestions?
Yeah, I, I have a question. When I saw this, I, I was in disbelief that we are nickel-and-diming businesses in our village. If you're a bar or a restaurant, you're getting taxed to have seats, if you have a jukebox, that's another tax, if you have a pool table, that's another tax. I, I'm all for it, I mean, I, I think this is an undue burden on, on our businesses, and most of our businesses are, are small businesses.
It's actually, it's interesting, because a lot of the complaints we get are not financially-driven, but it's more or less the paperwork behind it and the processing. It's on, it's on its own, its own year cycle, it goes September 1st to August 31st, I believe, when the registration program is on a calendar year, so it creates a lot of confusion both internally with staff and the businesses themselves.
Are you proposing that we do then just a general business license each year for the, all businesses, or what?
Well, we would stick with what we have now, every, every business has a regard to register. The only thing we, we would remove is section 5.04, and that's actually, I printed that off, it's, this is the portion in the, the second page after the staff memo, and that includes those different jukeboxes, amusement devices, bowling alleys, billiard tables, everything included with that application, with the exception of the waste hauler. The waste hauler, we only have about nine or ten annually, it's a very easy program to manage with only nine or ten businesses.
But it's not just about managing with the waste haulers, they're doing wear and tear to all of our roads as well, so, you know, someone's jukebox isn't really damaging a street, but a heavy truck is. So there is more of a basis for having a license fee.
Well, I would assume that the surrounding communities have some sort of business license, don't they?
Correct, yeah, this, this is, this is pretty common in other businesses, in other municipalities.
I, I, I don't have a problem with our businesses paying a license fee. I think maybe doing it annually is probably a little burdensome. What about doing it every three years?
That, it wouldn't be, it'd be, it'd be probably on our end more internally, a little more difficult to track, if you will, every three years.
Well, do you want to go into the history of why the business registration program started originally, annually, it was to track?
Yeah, the business registration program originally was to, it was done in conjunction with the North Aurora Fire District, it was basically to collect information on keyholder information, if there was ever emergency contacts for the businesses, that was the That was the intent of the business registration program. What's nice about that is it's unannually, it's a fixed rate, and we get actually demographic information as well. We get information on how many employees each business has. We actually merge it together, too, with the alarm, the burglar alarm permit, which was required. We also just mesh the two together, so now we are able to kind of combine and streamline that process as well. So before we had two, now we get alarm information as well on one application. So we were, we're doing the best we can to kind of funnel everything together, and actually now with conference room staff on board, we've actually been able to go out and obtain